Evening, let's call this regular meeting of council to order for December the 12th, 2022 at 7:00 AM. I'd like to recognize that we are on treaty five territory. The traditional territory of New York City Nation and the homeland of the making and that we are all. All right, I'd like to say that we have regrets from Deputy Mayor Valentino this evening. And I would just like to acknowledge the passing of Federal Minister Jim Carr, who was a great advocate for the city of Thompson. Some condolences to his family and colleagues. Next, I'll go for approval of the agenda. Council one, over, all in favor. Community comments, feedback, do we have anybody? No, seeing no one in the audience, we will continue. First, we're going to go with adoption of minutes to the regular meeting of council. Resolution two zero two 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 zero seven, moved by councillor Fitzpatrick, seconded by councillor Tom. Here resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting of council held in council chamber, city hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on Monday, November the twenty eighth, twenty twenty two be adopted as certainly. Administration.
Nothing further.
Any comments from council? Question one.
Just a quick question about this number. Are we talking about two zero two nine? Two, uh, two zero two 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 zero nine?
Two zero seven. You're okay?
I'm good, thank you.
Uh, call for a question, all those in favor? Next is five point two, committee of the whole for December the fifth, two thousand twenty two. Resolution two zero two 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 zero eight, moved by councillor Tom, sent by councillor Fitzpatrick. Here resolved that the minutes of committee of the whole meeting of council held in council chamber, city hall, Monday, December the fifth, two thousand twenty two be adopted certainly. Administration.
Nothing further.
Council. See none, call for the question, all those in favor? Thanks for going into resolutions. Five point one is a resolution to approve two thousand and twenty three provisional estimates. Resolution two zero two 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 zero nine, moved by councillor Fitzpatrick, seconded by councillor Tom. Whereas in accordance with section one sixty three of the municipal act, the council of the city of Thompson has made provisional estimates of all operating and capital expenditures of the municipality for the period from January twenty twenty three until the adoption of the annual estimates. Now therefore be it resolved that the following provisional estimates be hereby adopted as operating requirements. General Government Services, one million fifty thousand dollars. Protected Services, four million five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Transportation Services, one million six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Environmental Health, six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Public Health and Welfare, a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Environmental Development, five thousand dollars. Economic Development, a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Recreation and Cultural Services, one million one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Fiscal Services, one hundred thousand dollars. Capital, six million dollars. Utility expenditures, six million dollars. Total of twenty one million three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Go to the administration.
This is a yearly request that comes from the administration to council, it's allowed to allow for provisional estimate of what the budget would be over coming months. It's based on five calls of the previous year's budget. This year's was modeled on the previous one that was passed the year before. Basically, just to give the administration five months of operating until council passes its actual budget. Once the actual budget is passed in May or whenever it passes, the numbers reconciled, it's averaged out or evened out so that the actual budget takes it over. So this is really just giving us the flexibility to operate for at least five months until the final budget is passed.
Thank you, councillor Fitzpatrick, it's a mover, do you have any questions? Other council members, council more?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I, manager said this is the last year budget. Is the last provisional estimate number?
That's correct, we're using the same number that was used last year.
So can I follow up? Does that mean we suggest we go spend the same way of last year?
This has nothing to do with how the suggestion of the final spending is, it's a calculation of what's available for us to start operating as of January first. Council then determine what the actual budget will be for the rest of the year. Council wants to reduce in an area, then they would reduce in that area, if they wanted to increase, they would increase. Right now, this is an estimate based on the past spending brackets.
So, okay, why are we using five months, can we just use three months?
The five months is based on the date by the municipal act by which the municipality has to pass their budget. So usually that is by May fifteen, so that's why the five twelves. Like I said, if council passes their budget earlier, then this isn't required anymore on the financial plan table. The reason being is it gives, it gives the ability for the administration to continue to operate for just five months without having to bring back resolutions over and over to approve spending.
I personally, I don't like the practice because in the under the municipal act, one sixty three did not say is five months, so it's just based on the past practice. So to me, I think we, 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 as elected official, we don't have to argue about this, I think it's our obligation to make sure the money spent, the money that we budgeted, even the provisional, gotta be accountable and with the detail. So right now, we can, to me, this is my opinion. It looks like we are giving a check for twenty one million dollars and then we are just adjusting later. So what if there's no room to adjust? There will be my problematic for me to improve this kind of not detailing a provisional budget, so with that, I would like to thank you.
Thank you, any other comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question is, capital expenditure and utility expenditure, can you explain what actually is?
So the capital expenditures are anything to do with capital projects that are underway by council. So if there's anything that has to be tendered or if there's anything that's being built, say, assigned agreements to get some of the roads paved, we have to have capital dollars that are separate from the rest of the operating budget. In terms of utility, utility operates under its own separate budget, so it has to show as a separate line that requires five twelfths of the year capital or operating available to it. That's because the utility operates completely separately from the rest of the city's operations.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I understand this. I'm not sure if only the council is very, with the municipal act, as in provincial governments and federal governments, uh, they start a budget, although the budget isn't set for their year coming, you need to have funds to carry on regular city business provisions. As a traditional employee for twenty three years, we do the same thing with the province. They go off their budget from last year on to a certain, but when their budget actually passes and you know, the commission, same as the city, and it's what they do under municipal act. It's not like our administrations went out to find something frivolous for us to spend on, they're supposed to be dealing with what you already suggested. From the past. What this does give us our administration, the funds to continue to do city business, you know, doing the streets, doing whatever you got to do under that budget, yeah. We were to reduce, say, the capital budget with six million dollars in that document, we said that if we were to spend that, then we need to go down and budget, cancel something that was coming up. This is the five twelves of last year's budget. Whenever we change it to, that's what the budget would be for years, we wouldn't be going above that. Unless we change the budget to increase that, say, we go to do another calendar project or something, there is a doubt. That's what that's for, and it's just to keep the city moving so we can deal with the budget, we will be starting that, I'm sure.
Anyone else? Uh, before I vote councillor Wong, is there anybody else wants to make a first comment? Councillor Wong?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, with all due respect, there's not an argument about letting the business carry on, but again, we, there's no ground to base on, I just picked one item, general government service. There's no detail to say in five months, we need one point zero five million dollars. Unless they can break it down by wages, by stationary, the spare, whatever, then we can see that's the meter. Maybe the five months is more than that, maybe the five months is less than that, understand the adjustment, I totally understood that. I'm not a first, first term councillor, so I just want to make sure that by detail, all I'm asking is by detail. Because without a detail, this is just simply through a number which is, we're using the last year. And again, we don't have a CFO right now to give us a better picture, so that's why questioning this. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so this is, as councillor Wong and councillor member, this is the age that you and the eight years I've been on council. If there is a shift, it has been adjusted in the budget. And this is definitely just given the ability for our administration that to carry on. If we have any questions about any part of the budget, everything comes before us, any big amounts that are going to be spent anyway. So this is just gives them the ability to carry on. If we only did it for a month or two, then we have to be back forth with the provision. And it's, I, I find, I'm willing to support this, I have found that there's been no issues in the last eight years that I've been on every. With that, seeing no more questions, we'll call for the question, all those in favor, oh, councillor Wong asked for a recorded vote, did you?
Yep.
In a recorded vote, all those in favor? Councillor Chong, councillor Fitzpatrick, councillor MacIver, Mayor Smoot, Mayor Holburn, Mayor Lamar, Mayor Leibertorfer. Opposed? Councillor Wong. Sorry, folks. Six point two is a resolution authorizing administrative entry to contribution agreements with controlled entities. Resolution two zero two 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 one zero, moved by councillor Landmark, seconded by councillor Fitzpatrick. Here resolved that council authorized administration to enter into provision provisional contribution agreements with the following controlled entities for twenty twenty three. Thompson Public Library, Thompson Recycling Center, Royal Discovery Center. Administration.
Similar to the last one, these are three controlled agencies that are funded by the city of Thompson. They also require funds to continue operating as of January first. Typically, every year, we've been ordered a, a resolution to this effect to allow the administration to continue to fund them until the budget is decided for council, for the, till the budget for them is decided by council. So by May, you'll decide your actual budget, and if we have to adjust the amount of total money down or if it's going to go up, we'd make those adjustments at that time. But this really allows us to get them through the first five months of their operations with operating dollars, so that you can continue to offer the services for the city of Thompson.
You've councillor Landmark, any comments?
Certainly, yes, this is as our CEO, CEOs discussed, the Thompson Recycling Center and the library, the funds to run, and we want this to close and down, just to get them through. And I'm sure that Anthony's explained it well enough that if we were to reduce or increase the budget, those numbers could be changed accordingly, so this will get them through the first five months and keep those operations going, thank you. All these words.
And these entities do come to make public presentations to us when we start the budget process, we understand what they need for money. Any other concerns? Uh, council over.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, my question is just about what the dollar amount is attached to this resolution. I understand it's based on twenty twenty two, but there's no dollar.
I don't have those dollar amounts in front of me, normally, I believe, the recycling center is about a hundred thousand dollars. Um, the others are after all, they're kind of repeats every year.
Councillor Wong?
Thank you, ma'am. This money is already in the money one, no, you just, okay.
Could be part of the operating that you've just approved this.
Good, thank you.
Um, we can get to those numbers after.
So, thank you, Dr. Mayor, I think I'm going to find out that it's included in the previous resolution of the operating dollars that we have. Wasn't sure if it was separate from the prior operating dollars, so if it's included, that's fine, I don't need the numbers to be provided, so we all have them when we go through our budget process.
Yeah, typically, the Thompson Public Library receives about two hundred thousand, I believe, from the city.
It's over there.
The Thompson Recycling Center is between one and two hundred thousand, the Boreal Discovery is usually about thirty five thousand. So the agreement will prorate that amount down for five months to provide them operating.
Thank you. Anyone else? Call for the question, all those in favor? Here. Six point three is a resolution to adopt the city of Thompson's twenty twenty three emergency. Resolution two zero two 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 one one, moved by councillor Landmark, seconded by councillor Overdorfer. Here resolved that council adopt the city of Thompson's twenty twenty three emergency plan, administration.
All municipalities in the province for Manitoba are required to have today. Emergency plan, as everyone knows, the documents of these size, it's almost impossible to keep it always up to date, so they're always living documents. Where anytime we find an error, we go in there and make a correction, make a change. But council has to review and adopt the plan as a whole once per year by resolution, and that is sent off to the province to confirm with the province that you would drop, this is your plan. So this is the plan that they put together by the administration. Even as early as four o'clock today, we made it on the correction to one of the names in there, so there's always changes being made. We're asking that council adopt this plan by resolution, so we can let the province know that this is the plan that the city of Thompson intends to use should something happen.
Councillor Landmark, yes, move it, any comments?
Yes, thank you. These plans are greatly important. A lot of us here remember the fires in eighty nine, ninety five. We've been lucky, I won't say other things because Jesus, but it's great to have these, going through this, you see all the different preparations that have been looked at. Names that have been attached to them, some people, when you're in an emergency, you have a hard time coming up with names, or who am I going to call? And being a traditional employee, sometimes I can't find the names of colleagues online or whatever, so having this and being able to update those will help our administration and our emergency services people, if they need to contact, and when people get help. And it's not only just for our city. We're on the work in name and reality, so other communities rely on us, we rely on them. It's very important to have this, so we can help each other out in the presence, and not for stress, but we don't have, or don't have a climate of this. And possible, fully important part, better, you were about all, there seems like a very good part for reviewing all this, there's a lot reading. Thank you very much for this for this.
Thank you, any other conference?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just a question, is this document for public knowledge?
It's all on all that right now, except for the ones that are locked, there's certain sections that are locked because it has people's personal home and contact home. So the emergency operating group needs to know that, but we're not going to publish their personal information to the public for privacy reasons. But the parts that are available are there, and we can always make them available to people as well. I believe certain parts of the plan may be online, but I'd have to double check that, I know the community wildfire plans are online.
The reason I'm asking, because like, this is a public document, if they block those name, how they will get the people to find that, right? So that's why I asked the question.
It's because it's for you, spread operating group.
But also, I know this.
General public.
So thank you, I also noticed that there's a couple of member names is need to be changed, so just to, I know it's not the public document, but then we know, under the section two, the EOG, I know just a member. I believe there's a two name that, one, we retire soon, the name had to be removed or changed. And then one is the, under the R C M P, I think, moves to the nine. Those are two, I found so far, anyway, thank you.
Anyone else?
Nobody else, this is my second turn.
Yeah, anybody else want to comment?
Well, um, yeah, as councillor Wong is, made some notes myself, which I'll be forwarding to our CEO. Thank you.
Call for the question, all those in favor? Six point four is a resolution to appoint council representatives to control the interview. Resolution two zero two 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 one two, moved by councillor Holburn, seconded by councillor Landmark. Here resolved that members of council be appointed as council representatives to the following controlled entities. Thompson Library Board, councillor Landmark, Oriole Discovery Center, the Thompson Zoological Society, councillor John, Thompson Recycling Center, councillor Overdorfer, Thompson Housing Agency, Mayor Smith.
Yeah, as noted, these are organizations that are funded by the city of Thompson, either fully or partially. And therefore, they have a part of the agreements, they have council representatives that sit in on their boards. Normally, those representatives then report back to council if there's any issues, will play a role as a liaison between that board and this council. Appointments are typically for one year.
Councillor Holburn is a mover, do you have any questions?
None, thank you.
Any other council comments? See them, call for the question, all those in favor? Here. Six point five is a resolution to appoint council representatives to the community futures north central development. Resolution two zero two 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 one three, moved by councillor Fitzpatrick, seconded by councillor Overdorfer. Here resolved that council appoint, the council appoint councillor Landmark, primary, and councillor Holburn, alternate to the community futures north central development board.
Yes, community futures north central development is a large economic development organization in our community. And they typically request a member of city council to be part of their board, so there's that liaison role, and then also some information is being shared back.
Councillor Fitzpatrick, any questions? Any other council questions concerned? See them, call for the question, all those in favor? Six point six is a resolution to appoint council representatives to the Thompson Aboriginal Education Advisory. Resolution two zero two 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 one four, moved by councillor Landmark, seconded by councillor MacIver. Here resolved that council appoint councillor Holburn, primary, and Mayor Smith, alternate to the Thompson Aboriginal Educational Advisory Committee. I think.
This is also another board that meets on the topic of Aboriginal education, it meets roughly about two to three times a year. Um, with a wide number of different players across the community, providing their input and discussing issues.
Thank you, councillor number, any comments? Any other council comments? See them, call for question, all those in favor? Here. Six point seven is a resolution to appoint council representatives to the Thompson Urban Aboriginal Strategy. Resolution two zero two 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 one five, moved by councillor Dunbar, seconded by councillor MacIver. Here resolved that council appoint deputy mayor Valentino, primary, and councillor Holburn, alternate to Thompson Urban Aboriginal Strategy Committee.
This is a committee that the city of Thompson has been part of, I believe, since day one of exclamation in Thompson. It's a very important committee that we've worked with, and is currently held with N K O, which discusses urban Aboriginal issues and a number of initiatives that we've seen throughout the city of Thompson, have in partnerships between the city, T U A S, as this group is known, and other entities. Normally, there's a member of council, and there will also likely be members of the administration attending.
Councillor Landmark, any comments?
Thank you.
Anyone else, comments? See them, call for the question, all those in favor? Six point eight is a resolution to appoint council representatives to the Vale community liaison. Resolution two zero two 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 one six, moved by councillor Holburn, seconded by councillor Overdorfer. Here resolved that council appoint councillor MacIver, primary, and councillor Fitzpatrick, alternate to the Vale Community Liaison Committee.
Uh, this is another one from Vale, where there's been a request, remember, council to be in the liaison committee. There's the official names that are submitted, but Vale will often invite all members of council as well. Um, but they do have official names that they keep for their liaison when they're having special events.
Councillor Holburn, any comment?
No.
Any other council comments? See them, call for the question, all those in favor? Thank you. Six point nine is a resolution to approve the twenty twenty three committee of the whole and regular meeting of council schedule. Resolution two zero two 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 one seven, moved by councillor Wong, seconded by councillor Holburn. Here resolved that council approved the twenty twenty three committee of the whole and regular meetings of council. Would you like me to read all the dates that we have the law?
No, Mayor, it's all full.
Thank you. Uh, all to the administration.
Yeah, so this is the basic calendar for the upcoming meetings of twenty twenty three for council, both the committee and the whole and regular. As reviewed in the last meeting, the whole meeting, there have been adjustments made for the summer months so that there's only one of each type of meeting in the month rather than two, as well as adjustments around dates that are national or local holidays. So the meetings are rescheduled to a Tuesday or whatever the date may be.
Uh, councillor Wong, any comments?
Uh, just a curiosity, Madam Mayor, ever since this system changed to the media at home, do we spend more time here or less time compared to the last system? Just a curiosity.
Yeah.
Like because of the meeting?
I have no way of checking the metric toward you, that's not something that we track. I have no way of checking the metric toward you. That's not something that we track.
I think it's very similar personally. I prefer the landmark.
Maybe guarantee that there's less time at the city hall or at committees. When I used to attend a number of committees. Um, you you're in that committee meeting and you hear the same, and say, public works. You hear there. And then you go to finance committee. Then you hear the same thing again, and then you go to, well, not the same thing, which you can talk about different parts of the same thing, which we get here. And then you have, uh, finance be another or Nega and legislature review. And then you come to sometimes you hear three or four times before you you have done. There was a lot of things that you mulled over, um. And you looked at it a little closer. Discuss with other stuff and there's more younger in the public, but I'd say.
So I, I do think that's one of the things we've talked about discussing that we could change some of the things we will do in future.
You know, just to remind council that this is what dropping the calendar, when a council wants to make changes to committee structure, that's part of the review of the working procedure by law, which we're required to do once per.
Any other comments? Of the question, all those in favor? Very. Six point ten is a resolution to approve waiving fifty percent of the fees for the bird tables hosted by the Manheim Trappers. Resolution two zero two two, two one eight. Moved by Council Number, seconded by Council MacArthur. Whereas the Manicoba Trappers Association has requested the city of Thompson waive fifty percent of the fees associated with the rental of the Thompson Regional Community twenty twenty two bird tables, though December sixteenth and seventeenth, twenty twenty two. And whereas the council of the committee of the whole meeting reviewed the request and recommends request be granted. Now therefore, here is all that council waived fifty percent of the fees associated with the rental of the T R C C for the twenty twenty eighteen bird tables at a cost not to exceed, uh, one thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-seven cents. Administration.
Bird table are an important traditional event that has taken place in Thompson for many years. Um, the city of Thompson's always been lucky to hold this event. Um, and clearly there's a request that comes in for waiving of certain fees. Um, the attrition for the last several years has been waived up to fifty percent of the fees. Therefore, that is what the resolution is of council tonight for approval.
You, Council Number?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I appreciate that. The fact that this allows us to city to help out and support a traditional event. It also helps allow or or helps uh, some of our folks who know by communities, coming to town, exchange trade their verse and, uh, also to shop locally, uh, our share. Takes out their Christmas presents, takes them drop home to the community at lower cost. And it was a big event when I was small, young guy, uh, grabbed my grab, I was got for that crap. Um, so it's nice to see everybody there. If you can go down and attend, it's a wonderful event. Once everyone's lost things to be purchased and, uh, you see some of, um, our traditions. Thank you.
Any other comments, Council? Council on?
Thank you, Madam Mia. I just noticed that's, uh, that's a letter attached or missing, so it's just not a, not a big issue, just to, uh, make sure next time there will be a, the letter attached to let the people see what they're asking. Because right now the public will not see the hard people waving and then we just wait. So that way it's more clearer the public perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. The letter was attached to the whole. Thank you. Hey, any other, uh, call for Fitzpatrick?
Yeah, uh. Didn't the letter say that, uh, they were asking for the whole thing to be waived and we we decided to go over fifty percent and that was.
The way the letter was written was more generic and it actually requested a waiving of fees. Yes, it didn't say what, what percentage, so it could be interpreted one way of a hundred percent. Or councils, it's similar to the letters we receive from them every year. The councils typically decided to make that fifteen.
Council MacArthur, that is my same question. But, um, the thing is, like, if there was, uh, per tables in Athens where I go every year, end up going there and make a say what I have compared to a quarter and fifty dollars, but it's where that we need to continue that. It doesn't mean so much of a very traditional tradition that was mentioned happening with this base that we have told you to to support it all. Council on?
Thank you, Madam Mia. I, I, I know that the, the letter was attached to the bill book. But that is not the place that we improve, that we approve or give with by resolution, I will say. I would expect that we be attached as well. That's why I'm asking. I'm not saying this wasn't attached from previous, but it's not to do it today. This is the, this is the place that we approve to wear. That one wasn't. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, uh, yes, uh, definitely, uh, sixteenth and seventeenth. Uh, I've been asked to give greetings at ten A M on the sixteenth, so let any of you that care who join for, join me. Uh, there, it was too much approved. But definitely take a trip down there. It's definitely worth just talking to the different trappers, to the different organizations around there. It's, uh, it's quite the northern, two northern experience. Just the most common priority. Like, is it, I, whoever you're gonna, uh, is your first year, I'm gonna visit them. We're heading out Saturday morning. Come Friday, there, there, no Friday, I didn't have Friday, Friday, that's start Friday. Okay, so call for the question. All those in favor? Very. That goes out to the public duty page show up and come and support. First might be a last minute shot. For the first regular.
No, I have the virtual.
Okay, next we're going into bylaw seven point one. This is the first reading of bylaw two zero two nine, two zero two two lottery license by law. Resolution two zero two two, two one nine. Moved by Council Overdorfer, seconded by Council Auburn. Here is all that bylaw two zero two nine two zero two two being a bylaw of the city of Thompson to amend bylaw two zero two seven two zero two two being a bylaw to regulate the licensing of lotteries within the city of Thompson. Be introduced and read a first time. Administration.
So this is an amendment to the bylaw that was passed earlier this year, the lottery, the lottery bylaw. And if we have made a couple of adjustments, one that we're going to allow the double roll tickets, so the, uh, the blue tickets you see where you pull were silent auctions. We're going to allow those as well as a sheet ticket, which is, um, you've got one main section and then you've got numbers on a sheet and you pull that and put it into the silent auction. So this will help the silent auctions out and make it a little bit easier to do that.
Thank you. Um, Council Overdorfer is a mover?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I would just say that, um, I'm happy to support this resolution. We need to make it, uh, as easy as possible for our nonprofit organizations and our student groups and things like that, or sports groups that are trying to, uh, fundraise and, um, I know it's been a struggle for lots of groups with the way the bylaw uh, was previously, so I'm happy to see this coming forward. Thank you.
Good to meet you. I'm coming to give them a y'all. And, oh, any other, any other comments? Council MacArthur. With the by law, like it's, it's, um, my question is how do they come to apply for a license? I don't know.
Where do you, where do you apply for?
The city, from the city hall. Like even like for, they're going to have socials and they have to apply and that?
So socials, um, they have post liquor store. So manageable liquor will do the, do the lottery for the socials. We cannot license those. Um, we can only license up to a prize value of three thousand dollars. Anything else has to go through products management.
Would that be the answer? Yeah.
They're going to say two thousand dollars.
That's what the city is allowed to.
The city, but then they don't, they don't license that social one, right?
Yeah, there's life for that, a liquor store with your friends.
Right. We can give your hipper permit for this.
Get your license, get your license also.
Yeah.
Okay, I know what we're doing there.
Any other questions? I definitely appreciate this change. I know, uh, many of the organizations have reached out to me over the last couple of months and you know, it's, uh, I really appreciate it over the start. Call for the question. All those in favor? Eric. Seven point two is the first reading of two zero three zero, two zero two two and vehicle for hire by law. Resolution two zero two two, two two zero. Moved by Council Number, seconded by Council Overdorfer. Here is all that bylaw two zero three zero, two zero two two being a bylaw to the regulation of vehicles for hire in the city of Thompson. Hereafter referred to as vehicles for hire by law, be introduced and read for a first time. Administration?
Well, if anybody can be excited about this bylaws, me. Uh, so there's some major changes to the bylaw. The first point is, um, shuttles and nonprofits. So there would be a license for shuttles and nonprofit. Uh, and that's so that we, we know who's out there. We don't have any, um, unlicensed vehicles out there picking up people for safety reasons. The next one is dispatch. So currently each individual taxi cab it goes to a dispatch. So we have zero control over any of the dispatches. So we've got added a little bit of rules to that. Um, they have to provide some reporting and things like that. So we have a little bit of control over those. Operators, so under the operators, your owner, operators, uh, we've added in the bylaw two accessible taxis. So currently in our old bylaw, we have forty-three taxis, one of which is accessible. We want to up it to forty-five and have free accessible. Pretty exciting for, for people. Um, there would also be, uh, a few things. So if you're decommissioning a taxi, I know everybody's seen these taxis out there that look like taxis but aren't taxis. So we've added in there that if you are decommissioning a taxi, you have to bring it to city hall, the inspector will look at it, sign off and make sure it gets removed so that it doesn't look like again, for safety reasons, we want to make sure that people know what they're getting into. And then another one was, um, no chance on windows, so. I know that's been a complaint in the past, but you can't see into the window, so we've added that one as well. And then for um, I think those are the major ones that, uh, oh, and we've also, I guess, fines, we've added a lot of the fine, you'll see fines come forward and then with the next bylaw resolution for fines, so. Um, if you're operating without a license, there's a fire. So right now we have very limited, um, ways we can exercise our, our powers. So we are adding fines as another alternative.
Thank you. Uh, going to Council Number?
Yes, uh, thank you. I'll be supporting this. The bylaw seems to help ensure the safety of both operators and generally public now. In the document. Wow, that was a long reading, but, uh, thank you for all of that and thank you. It was painful reading it. Can only imagine coming up. Thank you very much. Uh, all this points, thank you.
Anyone? Council on?
Thank you, Madam Mia. I do have two questions since, uh, Carol mentioned about this. Uh, is operation red nose forward to this bylaw as well?
Operation red nose will fall into this bylaw, yes.
So they must apply before they can do that.
Right, it'll just be a quick application, um. They're nonprofit, they don't have any issues.
Second question, when you say you want to add two more handicap then, so I assume, I believe you originally had one, so you're talking about two, one is for blue, one is for white and red, something like that? Is that what the planning was?
We have finalized that, but we would, what we have finalized is that it would be for new, new owners. Um, they would have the opportunity to get in, but haven't finalized whether it's going to be the colors.
So final question, then. So who do the draw?
We are working on a policy for, for the draws. And we will bring somebody in from other, uh, city.
We get to review the policy before you guys. Okay, thank you.
Council Fitzpatrick.
Yeah, I have a question, uh. People that see all, uh, people advertising will do rides, whatever, at her own home. That's going to be allowed or to have to regulate that?
Fines.
But I see, I seen a few just recently on Facebook, but people.
And I don't really understand, I don't think that people understand how unsafe that is, right? So we've added, um, some more rules for the drivers to try and make people safe. But also, if anybody ever has any issues, contact the inspector downstairs because those drivers are licensed, they have the criminal records checks. These people who are getting to these unlicensed vehicles, you don't know who's behind the wheel. So always make sure you're using a licensed taxi.
Anyone else? Okay, I, oh. Is lace, unlicensed taxi. Oh, okay. And it's just like, there be, there be, there, you know? And it's where I don't know, um. I actually had one of my, uh, friends come back home, ready to jump in an unlicensed taxi. I said, no, I'm bored of him. And, um, why? Maybe we didn't go to an accident. Some other concerns, yeah. Anyone?
Council Overdorfer? Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, I think that there's some titles in section two, three, two, um, but otherwise we don't have any.
I'll, I'll just verify with Council Orbitor for after, but that is the exact quotes from this.
What was it like, uh? Not that, there wasn't a title with the word sorry, I just think there's like some ground or maybe that we, you know, like there's weird spacing and stuff. I don't know if it's supposed to be that.
It's probably, okay.
Yeah. Anyone else?
Just to reiterate to the public and the council, what, uh, Carol just said, the importance of using licensed vehicles. All the individuals, those cars are inspected three or four times a year. The vehicles have cameras with G P S cameras that face inside and out uh, that are recorded, but cameras can only be accessed by the inspector, so they're secure cameras. So that people know where you are, things can be checked if anything happens. Everyone who's driving has a criminal records check as well as a vulnerable sector, I believe. And has had to have passed a course, the city of Thompson, Mannings. So there's a number of levels of screening and steps that have to take place to make the taxi cab safe. So just to reiterate what we put up for, please use property licensed vehicles. And if you see any other vehicles that are being used, uh, question, you can always call them in, the inspectors here in the city.
Uh, also, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, just one more question, does this, uh, by law change anything with the taxi commission other than like that we're changing it to change your name, I guess, but I mean, that changes the.
So I believe currently we have a taxi cap board, but maybe Carol can explain how the new one will work.
Yeah, currently we have a taxi cap board. This is just a name change to the tax board mission. For taxi, sorry, vehicle provider.
Sorry, just a follow-up question. So the structure will still be the same?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
I just assume that once the change. I just assume that once the change happens, that we'll have to pass a new resolution to reappoint members to that board. So at that time, council can appoint members of themselves as well as I believe members of the public or the taxi drivers association.
There's the same option. You can have, I think it's five people. You can have all five being. Many council members, you can have three being council members and two from outside the community. There is one change that we did say in the bylaw that if. You're taking two people outside of council, it was to be one driver. And one owner from different companies and they have to be moving by their peers. So that, sorry, that is a change.
Okay, customer one.
Thank you. Just one more question. Is Uber for under this by?
No, we do not. So the vehicle for hire commission, the bylaw does allow for the wording, I guess. We do not allow for it in the bylaw, but if council were to choose to do that, it would just even use the same bylaw and just add wording for, for leaving first.
Madam, you can have, the reason I'm bringing this up because when I heard the mayor, the manager said about the safety part. I don't think Uber got. Inspection regularly like the taxi that we do. But again, it's a, it's a, it's the twenty one century. We have to move forward. We cannot just stay back in the old fashioned way of doing business. Uber is big in the, in the world, right? So. God knows, maybe one day they will be introduced in Thompson. So since we are good, we just revisit the bylaw. Maybe we should touch on the about, about it. Then we don't have to keep doing this review and changing and changing. So if we can cover that part as well for future use. I think there will be better. Some sort of way to do that, to things. Thank you.
If that was the way that council wanted to go, it would be just adding a section for in this bylaw for hepers.
Okay.
Okay, I just have a couple of things. I did read all sixty eight pages, even if I did get tired by about four to. I got some little comments here, but my main thing is, is operation red nose is happening now. They're having trouble getting people. That is one where some of us just lend our vehicles even to them. That they run out of vehicles on the night that they're driving and then all of a sudden a few of us citizens. So I can see a bit of issue if they have to be licensed for operation red nose, especially this year with them just getting back in. So this shouldn't be passed by them. So we should get away with it this year, but it should be a consideration of maybe something like that. Then I found some contradiction in when we're talking the drivers and corporations and stuff. In one place it says that you have to be the owner of the taxi driver to drive sort of thing. But then it talks about corporation owned taxi. So I was a little bit confused in there.
So under the definition of person, it includes individual corporations or partnerships. So. An owner could be a corporation up until the passing of this bylaw, which we're going to remove corporations. And it would just be partnerships or individuals after that.
Thank you. Like I said, the rest were just sort of, I'd say when, when you're talking about. Getting people to declare if they're out of. How or that? Seven days it says in there. To me, that sounds like maybe a bit short. I think maybe, maybe four, five days. It's two weeks holiday, but then, but I do agree for anything longer that, or you know, and I agreed with your time limit for. Whatever it was ninety days or that. I think that's a good idea. Quite a few things. It was just, it was just sort of that. Contradiction seemed to have been a couple of places. So thank you very much. I see a lot of hard work went into there and I appreciate it. Anything else?
Thank you, Madam. When you asking the question, you create another problem question for me to ask. Because when you say the corporation will be removed. Become a person. I, I want to be clarified to the public. Is that mean for the newcomer or the one who's already have the corporation is grandfathered in? That must be clear. Otherwise, you create a lot of problems for the taxi owner assisting taxi owner. That must be clarified. Thank you.
You are correct. There is one corporation right now. It will be grandfathered in. We will have no further corporations going.
Thank you.
Okay, now you got me into a question. Now, I think what we should do there. Is. You're sure individual or cooperation can only own one view. Because if a person. You've got a cooperation. You've got another business. You can still run that business under their cooperation, but you can only own one cat. I understand what you're telling me, but if I was, okay, if I was going to buy a cat today. I would buy a cooperation car because when you go to cooperation, it covers it. It covers your personal assets. Right? That's what it does. Thank you.
Good, thank you, Anthony.
It's like recommended if counselors have any concerns with any sections, they've marked down the sections they have concerns with. Then they can forward off their comments to the department or bring them to second reading. Or whatever those are, so that we can address those specific parts.
Thank you. Call for the question. This is just the first reading. There will be two more readings that people will get to comment in the week. All those in favor. There. In conversation. Point three is the first greeting of bylaw two zero three one two zero two two. The municipal bylaw enforcement act, enabling bylaw amendment. Resolution two zero two 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 one. Moved by council over and seconded by council landmark. Here is all the bylaw two zero two three two zero two two being a bylaw of the city of Thompson. To amend by law one nine five three two zero one seven. Being a bylaw of the city of Thompson to allow enforcement of city bylaws, including parking bylaws under municipal bylaw enforcement. Get back to be introduced and read for a first time. Administration.
So this is to add these, these fines. So you, I think there's a few pages of fines or something crazy. So that's to add them to the municipal, to the enabling bylaw. Some of those, so five of those were animal control ones that we missed previously that we've now added. Three are in the compliance bylaw, which is in existence right now. And then the rest are all brand new. So those, by adding it to the enabling bylaw, that allows us to take it. And they can go to the screen officer for those clients if they.
Thank you. Also corporate has moved for any comments?
Down this courtesy show in. Do that include for? Twin motors.
There will be an application process for all of those, yes.
But they've been coming back to get with.
I was waiting for this meeting and that was actually something I was going to do tomorrow, this morning.
Thank you. Maybe.
Any other comments?
So just so council understands for the new members of council, in the new year, there'll be brought forward something called the Thompson City Thompson fee and fine schedule. That'll have all the fees and fines of the city of Thompson. And the new ones that are being proposed will be laid out there with a dollar value next to each one. Reason they're not put directly in the bylaw as it becomes difficult to keep track of it. So instead of all of these applies for the entire city are put into one document and reviewed by council each year. But by passing this legislation, you're allowing the department then to have the right to use those fees and fines.
Culture.
Just a quick question about this, the new fee set fine. So are we going to copy some of the municipality fees and file? Or we create a whole bunch of new fees and files for this particular? Bylaw that we're going to approve this meeting tonight.
We are creating new ones for this by law.
So may I ask, what is the range between from what to what number? So we are going to create a fee and fine for individual violation. So what is the amount that we're looking at between? What number to that number that?
Anthony's got a standard.
I believe correctly, I'm wrong, the model of the city of Winnipeg.
That's correct.
The piece would be anything, I believe, from say ten or fifteen dollars up to thousands or?
It was between, so for the drivers in Winnipeg, it's five hundred and then for dispatching owners, it's a thousand.
So, so in other words, we are, we are copying some of the recent five from other municipalities to, to use it, the number of.
That's what we're bringing forward.
And we will debate that when we're talking about the fee and fines.
Thank you.
Now. When they have. Like, I noticed that there's not a vehicle in. Their driveways and their. What happens there? And do they get fined or do they are there, so given a time to move them or something?
Oh, we haven't addressed that in this.
So there's a separate bylaw called the property standard bylaw, which I believe is also being revised. And that is something that would address those sorts of issues. But it's, it'll be dealt with under a separate piece of legislation, and I'm sure there will be other fines. Some of the law to be put through the same system is this.
It was starting to be a risk last year with our, our bylaw officer doing, actually talking to people that had their. Hey, anyone else?
Yeah, okay, then under this courtesy vehicles and shelves. KTC and a few of the other indigenous organizations have shuttle vans and whatnot that they use. Are this all, do these vehicles all have to be licensed under this bylaw now as well?
So we're still working on the application process, but yes, the idea is that we know who's out there and who's, you know, like. Who's, who's? Who's out there and who's safe to drive with, right? And to ensure that those individuals that are, do have shuttles, aren't charging because they're not able to charge. A shuttle is supposed to be free. A nonprofit such as the operation red nose. They offer, they operate on donations, but they shouldn't be telling you the minute you get in your car, it's twenty bucks. Right? So to make sure that there's rules and regulations for those shuttles.
So, so I guess. You guys want to contact all of those parties. Okay, thank you.
Yes, I was going to ask about the, the taxi commission. We talked, we just told that the commissioner. They changed. And board of the council. The taxi commission.
Well, really, as it's a bylaw, it's above the taxi commission.
So by law. I'm asking that we could be discussed.
We're here. So I guess the point I'm trying to make is it's a, all the bylaws are an object that is owned by council. So it's typically debated by council. Now, council wanted to send this down to the taxi commission to discuss. I believe there's three members there to make recommendations back up to council. You could. But it was brought forward to the committee that all already recommended for to council. But it's really council, it's council decision.
Okay, thank you.
Call for the question, all those in favor. I'd just like to remind everybody of the first page is next week. December sixteenth and seventeenth. And I think we should everybody a Merry Christmas and I call for a turn. Councilwoman, all in favor?
I don't know.
Next meeting.
We don't have a meeting, it seems, right?
January third, next week. January.
Well, no, but our in camera minutes, December nineteenth meeting, that's something that's going to come forward and I don't think we have any.
Thank you.
I didn't think that there was a meeting on. Maybe there is a meeting. No, we're not.